To approve the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Gary. Discussion. On the favor?
Aye.
I propose. Public comment. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items tonight?
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Gary. Second around. Discussion items. Discussion. On the favor?
Aye.
I propose. Thank you. Discussion items. Let's start with MNBA presentation. Angela.
So we were asked to present just a little 10-minute overview of what our vision is for all of the schools. So I'm here to kind of share MNBA's. You guys could probably recite what I'm about to say because I think I've been saying it for probably five years now. So I really do see MNBA as kind of the way that we've been building it with marketing and K-12. I really do see us being the premier online school in the state. We're offering lots of AP classes, college-in-the-schools, those types of offerings, honors programs for kids, having a wide array of electives, and really having high academic success. You've heard me say that for quite some time. I think in reality, however, though, I think as the years go by, I'm finding more and more that who we really are and the kids that we're really serving, we're almost becoming further and further from that dream. So every year, I feel like we're stepping further away from that being a reality. And part of it is just because of the kids that are showing up. You know, obviously, we need to serve the kids that come to our door. And I think the more I look at it, all of our measurements are really kind of saying that we're not there. Our enrollments are declining, our academic scores are declining. We really need to start focusing on why that's happening before we can even get to that point, is kind of where I'm at this year. So I really do see that we need to take some time, maybe step back, and look at how are we going to serve this population that's here with us? We're looking at kids that are easily 50 -- each grade probably has about 50% of our population that is considered at risk. They're below grade level by at least one grade level. And when you're looking at a population that is in need of so much support, we really need to look at our infrastructure and say, "How are we going to support those kids?" And I think the problem that we're faced with in MNBA is that we're an online school, so we don't qualify for Title I funds. So we don't have Title I support. We don't have para support. So we don't have that additional layer in the classrooms. We have not been able to qualify for a lot of the grants that the Department of Education offers, again, because we're an online school. K-12 already looks at us as being overstaffed. So in terms of providing additional resources to support our classrooms, we're not getting it from there. So we've kind of looked at a lot of different funding streams to try to bring that resource into our school, and we've never found a way that works. So I think that's really where we need to be focusing for the next several years, is figuring out what is our plan to really address the fact that our kids that are coming to us are in such dire need of support. If you look at a fifth grader, for example, who's considered to be one year, one grade level below, you have to basically give them two years' worth of instruction in that one year. The fourth grade that they're currently at, plus the fifth grade, to get them caught up. If they're two grade levels behind, you're looking at three years of instruction in one year to catch them up. And so we really need to be looking at some major support for some of these kids in terms of, you know, looking at pull-out programs, after-school programs, you name it. And I think that's really where we need to kind of be looking at for the next several years, is how do we bridge that gap, but then not lose sight of this is where we want to go? So I don't want to lose track of, you know, having that advanced program and really having that high academic success. I think that really does -- I think it really is the only way that MNBA does survive long-term in terms of longevity and just having a thriving school, is that model. But to get there, I think we have to address this piece of it as well. So... Any questions? I don't know if that makes a lot of sense.
I had a question. You had mentioned earlier that we aren't getting the support funding from the state. You know, and it seems to me that online schools are becoming more acceptable in this state. And I would have thought by now it would have been just, you know, like anybody else. And they would be looking at some type of support functions that would be available for the online. Have you been in contact with -- I mean, MNBA is supposed to have a group up there that's pushing this. Where do you see that? I mean, I haven't heard anything. I just always assume that they're trying to get more money for special needs or whatever, you know, from the state.
We're supposed to have a special group at MDE for online schools?
I don't know. That's what I'm asking. Is there somebody going up to the state and saying, "Hey, we're no different. Just because we're online, we still require these extra dollars for these things."
I've had a couple conversations with a few limited individuals. I think that's just started, at least from my perspective. And I don't know if there's more that you want to share, but I think that's some of what -- I'm with you, that I feel like MDE has been sending us a message in terms of that we don't want online schools going down the path that they felt charter schools had gone years ago. We want to make sure they have the oversight and that they're actually performing and being successful. So they've been -- they've really been overseeing us quite heavily. But yet, at the same time, I also feel like in some respects, our hands are being tied because if they want us to be successful, then we have to have access to the same resources that any other public school has access to. In a lot of cases, we're finding we don't.
Well, that's the thing. I mean, there are expectations from them. You know, they want us to be at this level. We have to do all these reports, all this other stuff that we're running around to do. But yet, at the same time, they're not funding us properly so we can get to that point. And is Hiawatha, I know Kevin's not here, are they doing anything to help with that part of it? If there's anything that they can do, I don't know.
There is a slight change this year from H-Ved as far as Laura Fredrickson, our new special education director for Houston, is trying to be more proactive for MNBA.
And I think I've seen more of that with our special education population, which is very high, by the way. But we also have a high group of kids that don't qualify for special ed, but they are still a year-plus below grade level. Again, we just don't have the same mechanisms. We've tapped our teachers out. They are doing about as much as they can possibly do in their classrooms to support these kids. We really do need to start looking at, how can we provide that pull-out model that most schools have? Because, you know, if you're trying to catch kids up, the only way to do it is to give them additional instruction. You're not going to be able to do it within that math class and differentiate enough to be able to give them that support. You really do need to look at having them in that math class, but then having some level of remediation. And that's the piece that we're missing. And even our curriculum is not -- we don't have remedial curriculum. So we have to go out and try to either build it ourselves, or purchase it, or that kind of thing. So that's the other thing that I really want to start exploring, is what can we purchase in terms of remedial curriculum so that these kids can actually get content that's at their level, but still tied to the grade-level standards?
I thought we had some, and I don't know the exact term, but enrollment counselors or somebody that would help. I thought we staffed some people to help get kids up to speed as quick as possible, especially for those kids that start.
That's onboarding as far as learning the systems. That learning the systems and learning the curriculum and the skills are two very different things.
I thought we had somebody who was helping get these kids, like some sort of support person besides a teacher. Don't you have somebody? I thought--
Oh, advisors?
Yes.
The advisors can't teach. The advisors are there to help with the systems.
Like a para in our school.
The advisors are more kind of secretarial in nature as far as helping them know where to look for assignments, knowing that the systems, because it's a very different form of schooling than the regular brick-and-mortar where you look at the chalkboard and you can see your assignments up there. This is -- that's what the advisors help with. But as far as advisors can't teach. If the advisors were teaching, the teachers' union would have every right to say, "Whoa, not acceptable."
So in our brick-and-mortar school, if we have a student that's behind, do we have a teacher on staff to work with them, or does a para help them?
If a student is behind at the elementary school, we have AdSIS reading, we have AdSIS math, we have ITA reading, we have Title I. In the high school, we have the AdSIS Student Support Center for reading and for behavior. And we also have ITA for reading. And if there are some added math problems, they have after-school help with their math teacher. And they can work in the Student Success Center on math as well.
So if we have these programs that are working, why can't we implement them?
I asked Deb Proctor about that because when I was, when we were filling out the application for AdSIS funding with the State Department, I first asked Cindy Woodcock-Johnson, or no.
Doesn't matter. Cindy.
Yeah, Cindy, at MDE about adding the online to that application. And she said she wasn't sure about it, so I called Deb Proctor, who was in charge of online learning for MDE, and said, "Could you please call Cindy and tell her that we can do this so she will allow online to be part of this application?" And Deb got back to me and said, "I'm not really sure how you do that either. Why don't you just try to find something else to do online?" And so since I didn't have--
Do we just apply for it and not, you know, see what happens? Or are they going to say, "Well, you don't have taken money for that"?
If we applied for it and we didn't get it, the whole shebang would have been denied, even the online site. Because with AdSIS, you apply as a district for your schools, not individual schools. And so if they would have denied the online portion of it, we would have lost the AdSIS onsite as well. And I couldn't--
And who pushes that for us?
The AdSIS application?
Yeah.
I do that.
I mean, but who do you send it to? I mean, so the two-way discussion--
It used to be Cindy, and now it's Rebecca Niles.
So neither one of them have a good answer for that?
They said they didn't think it could be done, and I knew that the application would be denied. Why in the world would we lose what we have on site?
No, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, they're saying they didn't know. Can we work on finding out?
Now we've got Jeff, now we've got Jeff Playman, who's in there in MDE as far as the online consultant. I've already talked to him about the possibility of online doing an AdSIS-type program. And to see if he would put in that word of support with Rebecca Niles, who's in charge of AdSIS at MDE. And he's very willing to go that route. And so that's something that I'm going to be working at. So in the next application for AdSIS, I know I've got the online person's support with the AdSIS person at MDE. But you need those two together.
Well, yeah, but just as long as you keep pushing it.
Yeah.
I think the thing is, and we brought it up multiple times, is that, and Rick's sitting behind you, but, you know, we have this amazing, some amazing programs in the elementary school. And it'd be great to get some of those programs in MNBA Elementary. And so if they can work together to do that, and I'm sure there's some things in MNBA that would be interesting or great to implement in the elementary here, too. So, but working together to get those programs. And the other thing we've said over the years, and I don't know if anybody's ever brought anything to the board, but if there is something that the online school needs and needs funding for it because you can't finagle it with the money that's available, ask. And we would probably put funds towards it. But I don't think anything has ever came to the board saying, "We need this, and we can't get the funding through K-12 for it."
And I think that's part of why I wanted to share it today, is that I think we are to that point, that we've explored the options that would probably be in my pecking order that we should do first. We should go to K-12, we should look at other options. And I think we're starting to feel like, not that we're going to drop those, but those aren't making headway fast enough for us. So I think we are to the point where I do want to start coming forward and saying, "We need X, Y, and Z. And here's what it'll cost, and this is hopefully what it'll get us." So it's kind of, I am kind of prepping you that that, I think, is coming this year.
Well, I think it should come to the online committee first. And then we have the discussion with Karen and say, "Why can't you fund it?" And we'll be hard with her, and then it's something--
Well, we've got the oversight money. And that oversight money is always the question of where is that oversight money going?
Well, that's going to be a discussion.
Well, that's our profit in a nonprofit.
But that's where we would have to be taking the money.
Right. But there, we were just, there was just the mention of some, there was some funds that was just, I can't remember. But something wasn't going to happen, and there's some extra funds that were available. And so if we didn't do this, I mean, I know there's some wiggle room. And we would ask you to try to do that first, obviously, before we would go to the next step. But, I mean, we need to have online committee meeting and talk about stuff like this.
I think it's a good thing that you're bringing it to our attention, Angela. I appreciate it. I think it's good that we have open discussions. I still think that what Mimi's talking about with you and Rick collaborating, we've talked about that for years. And, you know, some of the stuff we've done on online, and maybe I'm wrong in saying this, but we are offering languages to younger kids in grade school, which is an asset that we're utilizing. So if there's things that Rick can also go the other way with, that would be nice to help out. Some of these things that you say you need, if we have them in the grade school, is there a way of taking those things or accessing those kids to these people through online? Can we do that? Or is it like, if you're an online teacher, you only can teach online kids? Or is there a grade school teacher that has English, math, science, whatever skill is possible, that they can take some of these kids that are behind and help them succeed and maybe go forward? And if Rick has some of those people that have open hours or time allotted, maybe that's, you know, I'm just trying to--
I agree. If he has open resource, I'd be happy to--
No, I mean, I'm just, like Mimi said--
My guess is that by asking, he'd say no.
I mean, well, no, I think we should look at it because, like we said, we have an awesome school system, brick-and-mortar-wise. And I think we need to try to collaborate and try to make both of them successful. And by utilizing our teachers here, even if it's just Skyping in during classes, you know, maybe, or something that they can utilize, whether they're behind one grade, maybe they need to Skype into a fourth-grade class twice a week or something to get them up to speed or get a better, clearer understanding of it. I don't know. I'm not a, you know, teacher. I'm just trying to throw out some different thoughts.
And to your comment about paras, we have actually looked at paras in the online world. And the paras are specific to special education, so it would just be that population of kids. But we've looked at that, too, because right now, our model has the special ed case managers or teachers working directly with students. And, you know, in buildings, sometimes it's a para that's, you know, working with kids in the back of the room. So we thought about, can we do the same thing? We run into kind of a legal dilemma that we haven't quite figured out how to maneuver because the way our online classrooms are set up is that you have a main room where the teacher would be with a group of kids. If you wanted to do the equivalent of pulling a couple kids into the back of a room with a para or even a parent volunteer, we can create a breakout room, but that's a completely separate room. And so that adult would be with kids unsupervised. And paras and volunteers need to be supervised by a teacher. They cannot be working with kids unsupervised. So in our platform, we don't have the ability to move those kids into an area where they still would be supervised by a teacher. That's kind of the dilemma that we run into. So if we can figure out how to make that work, I think that's one of the things we want to do. But it's just one of those, again, where every time we tried making a step forward, we felt like our hands were tied for things.
So basically, you need a separate window on the teacher's monitor for the breakout room.
To be able to listen, I guess, probably.
Possibly. They need to be able to listen and oversee, just like they would in a classroom. And I know that's not complete supervision because they're teaching or working with kids, but they're still in the same room, they're still seeing things. We would need that equivalent type of thing, yes.
It seems like what you need is a licensed teacher to have a time in a room where all the students who need pull-out, they can go there. So there's a teacher supervising and not use the breakout, just have a separate platform site.
Right. And that's what we're doing now, is that because we can't have the parents, or I should say, the paras of the volunteers in a separate room, we're using our licensed teachers to do the work that non-licensed people oftentimes do. So, you know, it's one of those resources that, yes, we're making it work, but it's also limiting our total teacher time in terms of supporting other kids, too.
But does it have to be a teacher license? I mean, if you have a licensed teacher, then you could have paras, math para, or, you know, you could have--
Right. If we could figure out the logistics of--
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, I mean, that would be ideal, is if you could have, like, if fourth-grade math is coming together today, Robyn Christopher is teaching that class, that she has some window, as you said, into another breakout room where she can still supervise and oversee what's going on with that parent volunteer or para. Then you could basically replicate what's happening locally. That would be ideal.
To me, that doesn't seem like it should be that difficult.
I'll give you a call.
No, no, I mean, I would, no, seriously, in my mind, in today's technology, I would think that, but just, you know--
The learning management system just doesn't allow it yet.
Yeah, the platform, and maybe it is as simple as giving everybody extra monitors and speakers and that kind of thing. I think just being able to flip through between being logged into two platforms, essentially. They would need to be able to do that.
Are other online schools having the same problem?
I would imagine they are. I haven't reached out to other K-12 schools, but I would imagine they're having a harder time than we are because their staffing-- I mean, we're capped to the 1:40 ratio by Minnesota law. They don't have that, so they're, they're staffed much higher than we do. So I don't think that their teachers are probably teaching to the same level that we are. My guess is they're probably having a harder time with it.
Do you think they have the same percentages of behind students, so to speak?
Probably. Just, again, just looking off of their state standardized test scores, they're comparable or lower than ours are. So my gut tells me that, yes, they do.
If a student is two years behind, what is it that mandates they be put in classes they're not ready for?
The State Department.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So it's the-- It doesn't seem logical.
Key word there.
I will not argue that point. No, you're right.
It's least restrictive environment legislation.
Well, does anybody else have any other questions? Thanks again, Angela. I appreciate all the insight. Look forward to more information next couple weeks, right?
Well, online committee is, I'll go before you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you again. Houston Elementary, presentation, Mr. Barks.
Well, since they're having problems with the projector, I won't be able to sing this. I'm just going to have to read it, and I do my best, be Berkeley.
You do your best.
I'll do my best. Thanks. So what I'm going to focus on tonight is three of the initiatives that we're going to work on this year, and some of the goals and visions that we have for those. And I think that's going to come out in the goals. Is that correct? One of our big efforts is going to be PBAIS. And I think I've talked about this with the board a couple of times, Positive Behavior Intervention System, or Positive Behavior Intervention School. So we have a team of people from our staff who have gone to our first workshop in this. We went in August. We'll be going back again in November, and then again in the springtime. And this whole year, we're focusing on a team that will be developing common behaviors that are positive that we expect from our students. This has been going on in the high school for several years. We will also be working with the high school's Positive Behavior Intervention team here as we look at what behaviors can we expect from students that are positive and focus on a positive end, rather than telling them what not to do, but what to do in a positive fashion. And so this will be a culture-changing event in our school. A lot of the things we already do, but it's when we're all looking at using the same terms, and we've all come together. And by changing positive behaviors, we can improve on discipline issues. And by moving a lot of the discipline issues, we can then focus on more time spent in quality education. Of course, the other thing we need to look at is improving our reading scores and improving reading. We've been very successful in math. We need to really focus in on our reading. Since we've adopted the Saxon series in math, 20 years ago, we've had steadily increasing math scores. But now, as far as reading, we have a new reading series. But we're also looking at switching to FastBridge, which is replacing AMES Web. That will, a few glitches that we're currently working on, H-Ved, I think it was taken care of. But it's going to reduce the amount of time we spend on AMES Web and NWEA so that we can spend more time educating and less time testing. Of course, we do have AdSIS, Alternative Delivery System. We have ITA. We have ITA in the elementary school. It started back in 1994 in the elementary. Great success in the high school, and we worked on the grant with the ITA Foundation. And we've had good success with ITA. Again, we've got Title I, Special Education, SAT, a student assistant team that meets every other week to discuss children that are having issues, learning problems. We go a special ed route, 504 Plan, AdSIS, Title I. And we can focus in on individual students, I mean, twice a week in the mornings, with a school psychologist, the guidance counselor, and then classroom teachers. And that come together and we talk about individual students. Several years ago, with the RTI, we broke into different reading leveled groups during the reading time so the kids who are reading at a higher level can be challenged. Children reading at a lower level can be brought up into a higher reading level. We've added Homework Help. A couple of years ago, we started a Homework Help group that meets after school a couple of nights a week, and some of the upper-class, upper-grade teachers meet with those students on an individual basis. One of the things we're going to do this year that we haven't done is we've really focused on the MCA reports and the learning locator numbers that come out with the MCA scores that get handed back to the parents. So Mrs. Gavin, our school counselor, has gone through and identified all the learning locator numbers. And the parents and the teachers can go into the pearsonperspectives.com, find out the area of weakness, and there is also worksheets and example problems that the students can be working on. Then finally, we're looking at STEAM or STEM or STEAM. One of the two we're going to work on this year. Mrs. Sobek would say it's STEAM, and so I'll say it's STEAM. Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Design, and Math. And so we'll be focusing on ways that we can bring this into the classroom. So this is going to be an exploratory year where we decide what are some things that we can be doing to increase our science and our technology. Of course, we've added a technology teacher, which has been a big help. Having Becky, the integrationist, has been a big help. A logo and robotics, engineering, art, and design. Of course, we weren't the schools that didn't cut art many years ago. A lot of schools were cutting art and music and band, and Houston kept focusing on the arts. So we've got a half-time elementary art teacher. And again, math, our Saxon math is a real one. So those are some of the things that we focused on. And, you know, we're building on the past history that we've had in our building. And the main problem now is also, as I said earlier, one of the board meetings is finding a place to put the next two signs. We've got the 2015 celebration. It's been ordered by Jumbecks, or at Jumbecks. It should be here before October 1st and up. Our plan is to slide them all over. Put the celebration 2015, it's red, so it's not going to go with all the green signs, but then 2016. Issue that we have, we lost over 500 square feet of usable space this year with the addition of the air conditioner. It came out of a classroom, it came out of a band room, and a hallway, and a kitchen. And so we're trying to make up for that. We've added a lot of programs over the years. We have a DCD program now. We have AdSIS program. So we're using all of our space that we have. We just have to use it more creatively. Plus, and this is a great thing, we've added about 20 kids that we didn't have on our radar. And so this year, we picked up a bunch of new kids, and then we're going to get two more in October. So that's a great thing. And one of them said just the other day that they're coming to Houston because they heard it's a good school. So they moved from another district here. So that's what we're focusing on with it.
Any questions?
How's the online science curriculum going?
I will find out. I honestly don't know at this point. I don't think we've really kicked in the light here. But it will be, it will be doing much better. We have Jason Carrier now in fifth grade, big into science, big into online. And so we hope to tap into him a little bit more than we have in the past.
Is that the main one that we've kind of gone to E, to a virtual, to the Chromebooks instead of, you know, like you were talking about the Saxon textbook, and we've kind of gone virtual with that?
There is some virtual, there's a virtual aspect to it, but there's also a book, a workbook that goes with it, too. And then some experiments that come with it, too, on the basis.
So I was wondering how the students are going with that.
Next board meeting, I could put it on the agenda, or you can call--
You can come anytime, Rick. We have a meeting twice a month.
Thanks.
You're always--
I'm a geometer.
We can send you an agenda.
With the fourth language, is it fifth and sixth grade, or just--
We may need to talk about that because we're not moving forward with that at this point.
Okay. Because?
Because we're focusing on other things.
Okay.
We can use the time probably more advantageous to learn.
And that, remind me, that was not for everyone as well. There were some kids getting extra help?
No, fifth and sixth.
But were all the fifth grade, some of them were getting extra help and some were doing the language, or--
I think that's what ended up in the end, and we just decided that that was not--
That everybody needed extra help in certain areas?
They did have extra help. They found that that was, they didn't necessarily want to be taken in the fourth language. They wanted to help time as opposed to-- So, yeah, it did become an issue.
So how are you going to scrape up 500 more square feet?
We'll talk.
Any other questions?
Insulate that garage out there, or something?
It is.
Soon his office is going.
Oh, sorry. Put his office in the garage.
That's what I'm thinking.
My office is not 500 square feet.
It's a start, Rick. It's a start. Baby steps, buddy. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Staff development goals, world's best workforce site goals.
And they are one in the same? But I wanted to let you see that, that you've seen the site staff development goal without the MCA scores in there. So without the MCA goals in there. And so this is a comprehensive list of what each individual building, school, is going to be working on this year. These scores, as far as the percent, are based on the 2017 MDE waiver. So we base them on the 2011 or 2012 or 2013, depending on the curricular area, whether it's reading, math, or science, scores generated by MCAs. And then we had to split, we had to look at where we were and cut that gap between where we were that base year and 2017 by 50%. And so that's how, so for math in 2011, we looked at our math 2011 score, figured out the gap between the score where we were and 100%, 100% of the kids passing. And then we split that difference, and that became our 2017 goal. And we are now at 2017 because we had five years where we were trying to get there. And now this last year is our, is our great leap forward to hit those 2017 goals. The state of Minnesota is going to be doing a new waiver with the All Students Succeed Act. ASSA.
Did you change the name of it?
Yeah, All Students Succeed Act, ASSA, is now in place of No Child Left Behind and Nigglebee.
Did ESSA was in there somewhere? Wasn't it Every Student Succeeds there?
Every Student Succeeds there. ESSA.
Okay. That's why I thought they changed the name again.
No, no, every student.
Okay.
All, every.
Assa was.
Shush, Ram.
It's Essa, not.
E, S, S, A.
ESSA. Okay.
When will you know the new waiver or have they crafted it? They're still in hearings or they're still in this?
They're still in hearings. I will be calling into the superintendent's conversation with superintendents. So the commissioner will be talking to superintendents on Thursday. And she will have more information about it at that time. So I will put it in a Friday update.
Is that it? Okay. Any questions, sure?
And some of the, when I say giant leap for some of the goals, it looks lofty. But that's because we haven't made some of the incremental steps from 2011. It was math. 2012 was reading and 2013 was science. We haven't.
So these are makeable things?
No, in some cases, no. In some cases, yes. In some cases, we could hit that goal. In other cases, it's just.
Got to have a goal.
It's a goal. But it also kind of strikes at, one of my pet peeves is the statement, shoot for the moon. If you miss, you land in the stars. And all I can think of is the poor floating man in 2001 in space. Obviously, it's just, you don't want to be flying out there in space either. I would like to shoot for a goal and no, I can hit it.
Thanks, Quinn. Enrollment?
Enrollment by site is there. Since this was put together on the 16th, MNBA has increased by 16 more students. So that's what we have here for MNBA. This is not from Infinite Campus. This is from the Omni Report. So that does include some students that are slated for enrollment in October. So they are not showing up in campus yet because they won't be in campus until they are actually there. But I wanted you to see, because that October 1 number is the one where we usually, that October 1 number is a number that is typically the funding number for us.
I think you have a typo with the preschool. I don't know if it's supposed to be 27 or 37.
Looks like a 27, but that's.
Oh, 27, sorry. Yeah. 27. Good as a typo. Thank you. And those were the preschool kids in Infinite Campus as of last Friday. And we're still, there are still some preschool kids that are trickling in and getting their Infinite Campus file created. So that number could possibly go up.
Thanks. Any questions on that? Okay, thank you. Long-term facility maintenance update?
We're just working on the punch list now. Because, and that just means those little things where it's just the kind of loose ends and getting everything working and making sure that things are working as intended. We will, there will be a meeting in October where Mike Frye will be coming down and we will be signing off on everything. And, but nothing, we're not going to sign off until we're sure that everything is done correctly and the way we want it done. Do we need to have this on the board agenda anymore? Do you still want it there? Do you?
Yes, it's updated. I think we should have it on until it's complete. This is my opinion. And when you say he's coming down, is he going to go through all the required maintenance on the updated equipment and everything? And he's going to be there wherever he needs to be there?
Yep.
Have a checklist and make sure that we change filters on an annual basis or whatever necessary?
Yep. We've already got that written down, and that's already documented as far as when that has to happen.
And the boiler, everything's good to go there somewhat?
I think they're putting.
The glycol is coming in this week.
It's sitting in the backyard.
What?
Sitting in the backyard.
Oh.
In the alley.
They said that they would just test it with water. And I didn't want plain water going into the system. I wanted to make sure if the system needed glycol, I didn't want to test run this with water. I wanted to make sure that it always was running at the peak. Because I just said it's not that important to test it until we get the chemicals we really need so it runs correctly.
I mean, like I said, my main concern is we have, you know, we've spent a lot of money to get all this equipment and we're making sure we are maintaining it properly.
Yes.
You know, so we don't have to replace it any 10 years. Should be 30 or 40 years. I won't be on the board then, so.
Never can tell. How about the recommissioning of all the controls at the high school?
That's, they're still in the process of working through that. And they, they think they've found the issue with the unit vents. They said that getting the new windows in place, they noticed already that there has been a leveling of the fluctuations. And they think that the windows were so poorly sealed that they couldn't control the amount of fresh air that was coming into the classroom. And they were trying to control it through the unit vents. And it wasn't, it wasn't accurate because the windows were leaking. And so now that the new windows are in place, they said that that did make an improvement. But they also found there is something that needs to happen within the unit vents. And so the person did contact Winona Controls. And so I will be, I asked Andy to follow up on that. So I will ask Andy again. That was last week, so I will dog him this week again.
So hopefully, we'll see a decrease in our energy costs.
Energy costs, big time. Should be half, right? Hey, you got it. Shoot for the moon, right?
No, it should definitely be a decrease.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. We have a facility meeting next month.
Facility is October 20th.
Okay. Thanks, Ken. All business items for discussion approval, policy for second reading, policy 524.
There weren't any changes to what suggested by MSBA.
Move to approval, policy 524.
So motion to approve, policy 524. Second, Mike Gary, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Foesed? Thank you. New items, new business items for discussion, both levy certification?
Okay, here's the deal.
Here we go.
Anytime I start with here's the deal, you know the next thing is going to be exactly positive. I've got to come up with an increase. Okay. MDE has let us know that what they have out there right now as far as the long-term facility maintenance impact on our local taxpayers is not correct. In most communities, levying the max and then adjusting from there is what they typically do. It's what we had always done here until they changed the funding mechanism so that your levy is not based just on your resident pupil units. It's based on your average daily membership. As soon as that levy is based on our average daily membership, we are one of the few schools in the state that has a majority of their students open enrolled. And that makes a huge impact on that levy. So for most schools, they can levy to the max because it doesn't matter that the state's calculations aren't correct yet. For us, if we levy to the max because the state's calculations aren't correct yet and we don't really know what they're doing, our taxpayers could see at a 40% to possibly an 80% increase in their proposed taxes. I don't, I don't feel comfortable doing that. I don't think anyone would feel comfortable getting that tax statement in the mail. In the, and I can let the facility people, because we hashed this over for an hour before this meeting as far as do we want to adjust the local optional revenue, which is what we've done since 2014. We've reduced the local optional revenue at this meeting. So we haven't levied to the max just so the taxpayers didn't see so much sticker shock. And then in December, when we actually set it, we adjusted down a little more to what we know we actually need as far as operational money coming in from that levy. And I'll let the finance people talk about what we thought about that option.
Oh, with that being said, like Quinn said, we discussed it for about an hour, most of the time anyway. And we just assumed, wait for another, supposedly, they're going to give us better numbers. Gwen's going to work on that. And we have another meeting on the 27th.
So that would, that would have to be a special board meeting?
I'd have a special meeting on the 27th. And it's something that we did last year, I believe, just to feel a little more comfortable where that number needs to be at or where it will be at. So we, you know, we brought that up. And again, it went around the room. We didn't want to see a crazy tax increase because we don't want people to be scared even though this is a proposed tax levy. It's not a actual one. Again, as we all know, some people don't necessarily look at it as a proposed. They look at it like my taxes are going up some crazy number. What are you doing to me? So we take it pretty near and dear to our hearts because we're all taxpayers. So with that being said, we're going to wait till the 27th, discuss it, and hopefully, we'll come up with a number at that time. We also discussed during this process as far as money and long-term goals. As you know, we just spent a lot of money upgrading our schools, which we were fortunate to do with state help. And I think it turned out beautiful. You know, we were talking a little bit a lot with the facilities. So, but at the same time, when we started this project, we talked about adding on some space in the grade school, that cafeteria space that we talked about. And I think it's something that's been on the books as long as I can remember. So that was part of the discussion on how we can get monies for that. So we've got Quinn looking into some options down the road. Not happening necessarily this year. But again, as we know, when we've been talking facilities, finance committees, we've been discussing how can we maintain our schools and also upgrade our schools with the monies that we have allowed to us. So we want to see what money may be out there in the next year or two and how we can save money with what we've done to set aside money for this project down the road. So that's in discussion. More to come. I think we're going to have a part of the facility meeting. We'll have, we'll discuss that as far as cost to find out a truer number on that and what it would cost us. But as you know, with finances, we want to stay on top of it. So if that's one of our objectives, to have that added on to the grade school, let's talk about it now and come up with an idea if that's where we want to go for the space. Because like Rick had said, with our increased enrollment, we should have space for kids to have that opportunity to increase it even more. So that's some of the stuff we discussed. I don't know if I missed anything from meeting, Joe?
Well, we also talked about the preschool too.
Oh, yeah.
And the building and free preschool. And I think another aspect we talked about just was having Gwen and Quinn do some research to see what like this LOR, what the funds can be used for and if they can be used to pay for part of the addition or not and what all those various rules were.
Yeah, because there's some bonding questions that come up.
There's, you just never know, you know, every year it changes. We didn't know the opportunity last year until all of a sudden it was there. And we were fortunate because we were prepared. So as you know, with facilities and finance, you want to have your dreams set out there. So when you have the opportunity, you want to be prepared to take advantage of the money available, so.
Well, that's one of the big things we learned with this project is the value of planning ahead.
Oh, yeah. Very fortunate there.
And I think with these numbers, we just, they're so uncertain right now. We hate to even present them because we're really just completely, I knew we're guessing. And so if we know, it's hard to not levy to the max when you're, it's hard to guess on that because you don't want to guess, you know, too high or too low. So hopefully, next week, we'll have those numbers and then it won't be as bad of a guess. We'll have some better.
We have the LOR numbers. The number we don't have is a long-term facility maintenance number as far as what impact that will have on the taxes. And it's one of those where we'll probably, for you to remember, the long-term facility maintenance, they couldn't give us the same type of funding that they have for the metro schools as far as the alt-facility funding. And so it was a three-year roll-in on the long-term facility maintenance. And so last year, it was 193. This year, if I remember correctly, it's 296 that you can levy up to 296. And I know that granted, we get a lot of that in aid from MDE. In looking at that, there is still that tax implication with 12% of it. And so we need to really look at what that is doing to that tax base because we don't want, we don't want the LOR to raise taxes and then the long-term facility maintenance to bump it up even more on top of that.
Any questions?
Is there a certainty you'll have, they'll have this long term?
No.
Straightened out by the 27th, so we could be meeting with the same.
Well, we have to do, we have to do something.
I know we have to do it by the 30th, but maybe we should meet on the 30th. I mean, that's.
Well, we talked about that, but Gwen was suggesting maybe we could just have a little bit of, have a, meet on the 30th.
Or the 29th or something, you know.
Well, then my thing is when you put changes into the recording system, they don't go in effect till the next day. And so.
She was concerned about that. That was the only reason we looked at it.
And yes, last year, we did have to have the special meeting. And we had the special meeting on the 29th last year. And then it was kind of a nail-biter to see if the system was actually.
Took it.
-taking it, so.
But that's the reason behind it.
Yeah.
And again, you're right, Mike. Maybe next, at that time, you may know less than-
May not know anymore.
Exactly.
Right. We can't know less, but we're not guaranteed to know. We're not guaranteed to know more, but at least it gives the State Department a little extra time to run the numbers. Because when we got them this time, the guy from the state said they're wrong.
Okay, so.
And it's new for them too. I mean, and I'm sure as a caveat, next year, it's going to be a new number for the third year. We're currently going through this probably again next year, but then the year after that, the number stays the same because then we've actually hit that same 25% mark. And so then I think the State Department can be just using what they had the year before and tweaking. Instead of right now, they're recreating and kind of inventing the spreadsheet because it's a different, totally different number.
Different.
Change in rates. Now, let's hear you again. Okay. Any other questions? So we need to set truth and taxation hearing?
We have to do that at the same time we do the proposed levy. So this will, this will, both of these will have to lay over until the special meeting.
Point events? Announcements?
Let's see. And the first announcement is that we finally got the MNVA audit information back. And we got a 14.56 or a 97.06%, except that at first, we had a 98%. And then she said she did the math wrong, except looking at it, I think maybe she did the math right the first time. So I'm going to be running the numbers again to make sure that we're getting the actual legitimate score. In either case, whether we have the 97% or the 98%, it's well above the national average and it exceeds expectations. Those are, that's a direct quote.
This is the three-year review?
This, no, this is a-
Result of the audit that you've been working on?
The audit with K-12. I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. This is the K-12 audit. The three-year review with MDE, Jeff Playman got ahold of me last week and said that the links were not, he finally got around to opening our application and the links were not active in Chrome, whatever Chrome browser he was using. So I had to go in and Becky and I went through and redid the links for him. So then they were working, so.
Can't he use a different browser?
I did tell him that it works at Firefox, but he said, oh, I really like this browser. Can you fix it? So we fixed it for the browser of his choice. Because at this point, he's doing our audit. I'm going to give him exactly what he wants as he wants it so that he is smiling when he is, he's working through it.
Anything else?
Oh, yes. MREA. Oh, first, I want to thank, I want to thank Lisa Schultz and Angela and everybody that had a hand in getting that three-year review together. There was a-
Good job, good job.
Michaeline was on that committee too, so.
Exactly.
It ended up being a mountain of work, I would say.
I think you had the lion's share, Crin, so.
I think Lisa.
The three-year review?
No, that, that-
The same audit?
Oh, that, yeah. That probably-
And then the three-year review, I don't think I had the lion's share there, I think.
You put it all together.
Yeah.
Oh, good job.
Okay. MREA is tomorrow night from 7:00 to 9:00 in Rushford. And I know Michaeline is registered to go. Is there anyone else that wants to, you can, there is no fee for going, but they'd like to have you register just so they can plan for space. It's in the biology room upstairs. And I might end up showing up because the biology room is actually my whole classroom in the building.
Oh, that's a good reason.
Yeah, yes.
When they've had it in Rushford, it's been in that room a few times. They had robotics in there one time when we were in there and taped out on the floor. Everything in there.
Yeah. And then the other thing is all-school reunion, October 1st, Saturday. And it's also kind of the grand reopening of the buildings. At 10:00 in the morning, there's going to be a short program in the elementary gym. And then at, starting at 10:45 or 11:00, depending on when the program gets done, I will be having, I will be leading tours of this building and Rick Bartz will be leading tours of the elementary building. I don't know how many people are coming. It's also Oktoberfest. I guess it's also the tri-county electric-
It's A's breakfast, a Santa Fe breakfast, isn't it? And Oof that fest in Springfield.
Tri-county.
Tri-county. Tri-county, yeah. Yes.
Citywide runs.
So I have no idea how many people are going to be coming, but hopefully they will show up. Hurricane Foundation is going to be ordering cookies as a refreshment afterwards. And they've already said if they have cookies left over, they can stay there for the dance because they're, the homecoming dance will be in the elementary gym that night.
So you have to go to that to get a cookie?
Yeah, if you want a cookie, come to the all-school reunion on Saturday at the elementary gym, 10:00 AM.
I'm saying the dance.
Oh, no, no, you're not, you're no longer a kid. Unless, of course, you want to sign up to be a chaperone.
Sure.
Okay, but that's it for my announcements. Okay?
So, meeting and committee updates. We talked about the one we had.
And then just so everybody knows what's on the docket, we've got online committees scheduled for October 4th and then another facility meeting scheduled for October 20th. And my goal is when we have the January organizational meeting, I can once again go back to having all the committee meetings for the year planned out at that time. It's just with the, with the building that was going on and with some of the other things, it just, this year was not conducive to that. And so now we can go back to a more structured approach to life.
Okay. Anything else? No? Okay, board feedback, future agenda items, kind of one of that, right? So, we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, wait, wait. I have some suggestions for future agenda items. This is what happens when I miss a board meeting. I think about things that I'm, I'm wondering if it's possible to consider a student board member?
Oh, I've talked about that.
Student council has asked and I was expecting one of them to come tonight. There are two people that are going to trade off and I've gotten the names Morgan and Noah, except I haven't gotten last names. And looking at the student council roster, there's two Morgans and there's two Noas.
And it's Morgan Beckman and Noah Curz.
Okay, thank you.
And Noah asked if he should come, but he did, he said, does the board know? And I said, no. So he said, I'm not coming.
Okay.
One other meeting discussion, so that's good.
No, because I told Lisa that the board had asked for that, so.
What, was you had anything, Mike?
I have four things. Number two is-
Hopefully all that easy.
Since we, since, that's nice, student board member. Since we are most likely going to have a new board member in January, I'm wondering if we should talk about or what the process is for onboarding a new board member. I think we should have some discussion or process that we understand is going forward. Because I was kind of, I mean, I, you know, you kind of sit there and you're like, what's going on? I don't-
Do you want to have a mentor type?
I've thought, I've thought a little bit about it too, and I, and I don't know if it's, if the MSBA conference is a good thing to go to right away or a bad thing, if it's too overwhelming or if it's a good introduction.
Well, they get phase one and phase two training, but there's a whole bunch more things that we can do to bring a new board member up to speed, like one of the officers can't. I just think we should have an agreed-upon process. Who's going to do it? Are we going to let MSBA do it? Are we going to do it? What are we?
I think you have a combination. I think it's a good idea. You know, have the MSBA, if phase one and phase two is important, then maybe-
Anyway, we don't have to talk about them tonight. I'm just suggesting these for-
No, except that at one time in the past, we used to bring all the candidates kind of up to date on what they could expect.
Well, I-
And that might be a good start, you know, to do that and then-
There's some good information on MSBA's website about training or, you know, informing potential new board members. So I don't know who's tasked with that, whether we look at that and have Crin reach out to the candidates. Of course, if there are write-ins, we don't know who we're reaching out to, but we don't sound valid. So that was one. Then, so are we going to hear from the high school update since we heard from MNVA and elementary school tonight?
High school is slated for October 4th.
Okay. And then last, and I wasn't here to pull this off the, I read the minutes of the last meeting and I, I just had a question on, there was a discussion about a board representation on the tech committee and the decision was made or the, it was in the minutes that we're going to wait till January. And I'd like it on the agenda to say, why are we waiting till January? I don't think there's any, there's, we have October, November, and December. We have three working months to have somebody be part of that committee. So I guess I'd like to revisit that unless there was some-
I think the original, part of the discussion was just because that's how we organize our meetings, or our committees, I mean. I think that's kind of why we-
We had a new need for representation. We appointed some, January it would come up for renewal.
Right.
And it's not an official committee. It's not a board committee.
No, no, no.
It's not the finance and it's just some-
That's why when you asked about why we came up with that date, that's why. I'm not saying we can't do it earlier.
Okay, so I'd like to consider it at our next meeting to consider whether there's anybody interested and able to participate in it.
Able, because they're scheduled for-
I'm interested in able.
It's at 1 o'clock on Tuesday, or the 2th.
I can adjust my schedule, so if I'm interested in able.
1 o'clock.
The second and fourth Tuesdays of every month.
So, I mean, we can talk about it in another meeting, but I don't want that to be the, I mean, if somebody else wants to too, but I feel like it's really important that we have a board member present in some of those discussions.
That's all, Ken.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we vote on it next month? Yeah. Okay. We're going to put that on the agenda.
Agenda.
Yep. Is that it then? So do you have a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Okay, motion by Joe, second by Ron. Discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you all for showing. Glad to pleasure. Makes my Tuesday nights better.
Well, next Tuesday, we're here again.
Gotta love it.
I got a question.